It's back, I'm here. May I ask Ms. Margot if she will feed us in prayers?
I must first say that we want to thank you for this day. And we just thank you for all the blessings you did us each day. And thank you for your son Jesus, the God of the past, Lord. And we would just help us have this made today. Uh, and you did something you would be proud of, say something to us in our next meeting?
If you were to lay in stone, it would say, "Father, I pledge my allegiance to the Lord." I pledge my allegiance to the Lord. And to the God who raised your stand. On my nation, on my God, and in his name. And may he receive his blessings for all. Alright, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if you have a cellphone, I would ask that you mute or turn them off for the duration of the meeting. We would greatly appreciate it. Get mine turned off here. Okay? Actually, I did call, alright, meeting to order. Alright, Lucy, would you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Margot, here. Eugene?
Here.
Mayor Self?
Here.
Brenda, here. John?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, uh, let's see, we've got, uh... Always had to hunt for a pen. Okay. Everybody's got a mask on? Very good. Okay, let's, uh... Proceed to the, uh, review the minutes from the August 12th and the August, uh, 2nd special council meeting.
Maybe July 12th and August 2nd?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor Self, Mayor Arthur Self called to order the regular meeting of council at 7:00 PM on July 12th, 2021, in the town hall. Invitation was given by Myrtle Van Cleet. The pledge of allegiance was recited by all. The roll call was had, the following persons were present: Mayor Arthur Self, Councilor's Myrtle Van Cleet, Eugene Cowley, Brenda Lowe, and John King. Steve Brewer was absent. The minutes from the June regular meeting were read. Brenda Lowe made the motion to accept him with correction. Seconded by Eugene Cowley, motion carried. The financials for June were given. Eugene Cowley made the motion to accept them as given. Myrtle Van Cleet seconded, motion carried. Report of officers made a statement, only back. FEMA announced its selection for fiscal year 2020 building resilient infrastructure and communities. The BRIC and flood mitigation assistance funding. The BRIC sub-application for county lines safe running has been selected for further review. It was the only one from the state of Alabama. We should hear more news on this in September. Old business, we now have the microwave in the town hall for our deputies to use. The cost for this purchase was only $8,232. Block County put the town limit signs in the wrong location. Also, the overgrown weeds at Copperville, Dean's Ferry Road was being removed. The clerk has followed up on this with Commissioner Washburn's office. New business, Mayor Self read a resolution for approval of a mobile home age waiver based on inspection, IAW Ordinance 2021-001, Section 3.G and Section 3.H, and granted to Jennifer Morris during the June 14th, 2021 council meeting. John King made a motion that if they accepted as read, Eugene Cowley seconded, motion carried. Mayor Self asked for suggestions or nominations of persons to serve on municipal boards such as zoning and/or nuisance abatement boards. Curtis Cathy agreed to serve. Scott Mordecai and Heath Stockton were nominated. Mayor Self will contact them for us. At 7:30, Mayor Self suggested we break for 30 minutes and go into executive session. Steve Brewer made a motion to go into executive session. Myrtle Van Cleet seconded, motion carried. We returned to the regular meeting at 8:00 PM. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Van Cleet and seconded by John King. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, respectfully, Lucy Cowley.
Any questions or comments on the minutes from the executive July 12th meeting? If not, do we have a, uh, motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept as read.
I second.
Alright, made, uh, Steve made the motion to accept as read, seconded by Brenda, all in favor? Alright, motion carried. Okay, let's, uh, continue on with the special minutes from the special council meeting of August 2nd.
Okay. Mayor Arthur Self called to order the special meeting of council at 7:00 PM on August 2nd, 2021, in the town hall. The invitation was given by Myrtle Van Cleet. Pledge of allegiance was recited by all. The roll call was had, the following persons were present: Mayor Arthur Self, Councilor's Myrtle Van Cleet, Eugene Cowley, Brenda Lowe, John King, and Steve Brewer. New business, Mayor Self explained the American Rescue Plan Act. It was specific, this was specific funding from the federal government. He explained how this money could be spent. The council discussed this. A motion was made by Brenda Lowe to decline this plan. Eugene Cowley seconded, motion carried. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Van Cleet and seconded by John King. Motion carries, meeting adjourned, respectfully, Lucy Cowley.
Alright, so...
Okay, in the first paragraph, we had the meeting at 6:00. If the meeting was at 6:00, the clock.
I wish you did. I'll talk with it.
Okay, any other, uh, questions or corrections for the minutes of the special meeting on August 2nd? Alright, do we have a, uh, motion to accept with correction of the time? Alright, John made the motion. Eugene seconded. All in favor? Alright, motion carried? Okay. Alright. Now... Let's go over the financial reports. First up, we'll... Have the general, general fund account. Our beginning balance is $28,445.91. And our ending balance is $27,826.11. With one check still outstanding.
I'll take the mistake I made in, in the, uh... General fund. You'll notice there's a check in there for me and Dicky for $200, I think. You'll find that on your...
I see.
Okay? It should have come out of the 2 and 7, and I, I corrected it by going into the 2 and 7 account, writing a $200 check and moving it over. I was writing checks out of that book, and they're both big books. And I thought, I never thought about it. I just wrote another check. I got it and went to look, not sure he was here, and I saw him, and I went back in there and wrote his check and buried it out there. $200 is all I had to pay for that last look.
Alright.
That was our land.
Okay.
That was my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So we saved the money.
Or comments on the, uh, general fund? Okay? Uh, next is the rebuild Alabama gas tax. Beginning balance is $13,751.72. Ending balance is $14,675.96. Alright, rebuild Alabama diesel tax. Beginning balance is $4,444.99. Our ending balance is $4,766.82. Next is the 2 and 7 road account. Our beginning balance is $9,387.85. Our ending balance is $8,407.57. Okay, um... The next is the 4, 5, and 6 road account. Beginning balance is $12,923.71. Ending balance is $13,126.58. Excuse me, maybe just a second. Alright, uh... Next is the capital improvement fund, the beginning and ending balance, And the last one is moving Block County forward. Uh, beginning balance is $26,769.96. Ending balance is $27,430.2. Okay, any questions or comments on the financial reports as read? If not, do we have a, uh, motion to accept as read?
I make the motion that we accept them as read.
Yeah, we have a motion to accept as read, and a second. Eugene is seconded. All in favor? Alright, motion carried. Alright, I have, uh, no special committees, standing committees, special committees, uh, reports from officers, uh... Any feedback on the roads?
No, didn't hear nothing, no, I'm asleep.
Okay. Uh, along that same line, have we got our signs fixed?
Signs are in the right place now.
Okay, very good.
I thought we'd get, uh, hear from, I thought Commissioner Washburn would be at the meeting for this thing.
The no show?
Did anybody get in touch with him about the grass? Do you know? Does somebody come in there and cut one lawnmower whip?
They're cute.
On both sides, each side of the road, which you still can't see when you pull up there.
They didn't get, they didn't get that top rest, it's like this high.
Right on the side of the road, one lawnmower land.
What you can, when you pull up there, the, the, it's in the way. That's tall.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't get that.
No.
Well, they hadn't got it the other day when I was down there either.
Big part of what's left of that there is not in the town.
It's not. Whose property is it? Those home folks. Uh, as in? John, okay, okay.
It might have been Block County that cut the, you know, little bit that's been cut, but it's still hat, a hazard. When you pull up there, you still can't see that yet.
They could spray that area with...
Well, see, the trailer that's on that lot is empty. And as a matter of fact, most of them there are empty now.
No wonder. Shouldn't we ask John?
And nobody cuts the grass, period.
Could we ask John if it's okay if we spray that area to kill that grass?
I think you should ask her to do it. I mean, it's her property, she needs to do it.
That is, that is a nuisance.
Yeah. That, that could be, okay.
If you ask her, tell her it needs to be sprayed or cut because it's blocking the view of Dean's Ferry when people pull out there. Or turn in. I mean, if you're turning in, you can't see if the car's coming up there. And a lot of people turn in, you know, just in the middle of the road because it's not really a two-lane road.
No.
Uh, even though it, uh, may be considered, uh... Private property is a traffic hazard, and we should be able to have it cut regardless of, without permission of the property owner, because it's a safety issue. Okay, we just have to repile them again. And, uh, see if we can get them out there to, yeah, take it down, cut it down, pull it up out, one way or another. That corner needs to be clear so it has a clear view of the road. Okay? Alright, um... I said that, listen.
So bottom line, do I need to do this thing? What do I need to do?
Just contact the county and see if, and get them to cut it back.
Call the county and ask, tell them we need it cut.
Because it is a safety hazard.
Okay.
It is absolutely a safety hazard.
I said the corner of Copperville and Dean's Ferry, yeah.
Well, I went back to them after we had that meeting of that. I, I did send...
Well, like I said, somebody came out there and cut one strip about this wide on each side of the road. But, you know, it falls away back behind that trailer and everywhere. So that whole corner there, when you pull up, is blocked, you can't see.
Well...
I mean, the, the grass is like five or six feet tall.
Well, if it's being a nuisance, should there, a letter go out to the landowner?
Well, I think the county, if it's a hazard, I think the county should be responsible for taking care of it. I, I don't know.
That's my opinion.
Okay.
You have to contact county and see if you'll come and, uh, cut that, move it back. You know, Strickland did once before he cut it way back, but it's grown up, and that's been several years ago, so...
If it was sprayed, it wouldn't go back this quick.
Yeah? Yeah, that's true. Okay, alright, uh... Another thing I had a question about concerning roads and road funds. Did we ever find out from the Alabama Power about the change in the bill?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have not, man, oh... I've not had enough good days lately.
Alright.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, I just wanted to ask.
Okay, yeah, okay, I will, I, I will be, um, I will talk to them about that though, because I want to know.
Alright, uh, under old business, I had Dean's Ferry Corner. Have we been able to discuss that? I have no new business, no petitions, uh, applications?
I have some.
Alright, I have nothing listed, but, uh... Alright.
My, my new business. Lucy had told us about her shredder has burned up, so we need to vote for her to get a new shredder.
Get a replacement shredder? Alright, we have a motion to replace...
I make the motion to replace the shredder.
Replace the shredder, off the shredder. We have a, a motion, let me write this down. Alright, we have a motion made by Brenda, seconded by Myrtle, to replace the off the shredder, I'll move it. Alright, motion carried. You have permission to replace that shredder. Get a, uh... I know there's some freestanding shredders that you can get, other than something that sits on top of a trash can, where they actually, the trash can or receptacle is built in, and you just slide it out and dump it. So that's one I would recommend, because it'll hold quite a volume of paper.
Okay, okay.
And it does a pretty good job of, uh, cutting it up, so...
Okay.
Alright, any other new business from the council? Alright, uh, like I said, I have no petitions, applications, complaints, or appeals, and no resolutions or ordinances. Uh, any comments?
If, just to say that, uh, the light on the pole in front of the house is still burning from 47.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The street light, the new, the new light?
Okay.
The iron thing is not working, so it burns around the clock.
Okay, alright. Something else to go along with the street lights? Can we get a pole number yet?
I have, I can get a pole, but it's in...
It's the one that's above the, where the light hangs out. And a big number right above it.
The one, you know, where they put the LED lights, something right at the corner of my driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, back there. It stays on all the time.
Yeah, the number is, is, what he's saying is, the number is just above the light now. It used to be down on the bottom of, of the pole.
Yeah, I can get that over there. And if, if, uh... If the county said anything about fixing the flooding issue?
That's what I was hoping that fishing, we, we were going to talk to them about. Yeah, when it's, uh, when it crosses the road, when it goes in the field, that's where it's backing up at. It has nowhere to go. I'm talking about, did you say it was backed up on?
Oh, yeah, backed up during the picking road, stood, going to floods.
Had it heard anything else about the building going through?
No, no, uh, we should be hearing something in the next, I said within the next month, because, uh, my understanding is, we should be getting, if we're going to get the money, we should be getting a letter sometime in September, and I'm hoping it's going to be early September. As of last meeting, uh, we had a request for additional information, which is pretty common. Since we were selected for further review, they had a couple of questions that they submitted, and then Mr. Lee has responded to those. And had no other requests for additional information to this point. So, uh, I don't know what to make of that, you know?
Just hurry up and wait.
Yeah, hurry up and wait. But, uh, hopefully, I'm hoping by our next regular scheduled meeting that we will have more information. Like I said, I'm hoping that it will be early September, instead of later, later part of September. But again, we just have to wait and see. See what they, uh, decide to do, and, you know, how soon they contact us. So, that's, uh, again, a hurry up and wait situation.
How about the court? Have we heard of that, the court?
Uh, I have not gotten any update on when that hearing dismissed was scheduled, rescheduled. It was not held, uh, on the 3rd. As John and I both sat there through the whole docket that morning, and, uh, it did not come up. Uh, I need to, I need to call Alex back. Uh, I had left a message, but I hadn't, hadn't recalled, return call yet. I have one other little bit of information. I don't have a whole lot of it, because, uh, the Block County mayors got together... Hold on. Sorry, but, um... The Block County mayors got together last Thursday. Uh, we were supposed to get together at Swamp Tales, but Swamp Tales was closed. And I did not... and I did not get the updated information, so I missed the meeting. But I did talk to, uh, Mary Jones from Cleveland, and there was a representative from, uh, uh, Senator, uh, Turrail's office there, and they were talking about federal money for broadband, and how little of it there is. So, uh, that's all I know about that meeting, is it was not very. Uh, it did provide information, but it wasn't good information, and good news. That the broadband, there is talk and there is some money there, but not enough to, to give the county the broadband that we did, that we really need. Uh, but that, again, that's all I, that's all I know about that meeting.
Mr. Mayor, did I understand that FEMA requested more information, which Mr. Lee provided?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like, one of the questions was, where is aggregate, aggregate coming from for the cement? Well, that's kind of hard to determine because we haven't contracted for the cement yet, so I don't know where it's going to be coming from.
It could be mass materials or Birmingham.
Yeah.
All materials.
And wanted to know if there's going to be any fill, but no, there's not going to be any fill brought in. So, uh, but anyway, that's, uh, that was one of the questions.
Well, that was strange.
But it was, yeah, yeah, but, uh, anyway. Government bureaucracy at its finest.
Yes, that's.
Okay. Again, that was all I had on my agenda, does the council have anything else? Alright, yes, sir?
Canaline Road, uh, what we do, man, Green Acres. The lady, uh, she never spoke to each other about the road church down there, I mean, I'm not tipping up on them, so.
Okay.
Anybody in the process of trying to get that thing going down there?
Canaline does not own those roads.
Probably. Probably after this winter, they're going to be following big time and then work.
That, uh, the roads were never accepted from the builder. The town has never accepted the roads from the builder, so the builder is still responsible for the roads.
Everybody probably the same, that's what they're talking about, that's what they want. See what's all that mess.
That, uh, something. Yeah, well. Uh, the town, the town cannot take any action on those rates, period, until we accept them, and we're not going to accept them as they are. They have to be finished before the town will ever consider taking them.
Be going, yeah, right, summer, my friends, mine, this, that, this.
And. That, uh, that is outside the responsibility of the town, that's all I can say right now. Okay, um, after the meeting's over, I'll talk to you more about it. But it's not the, the town is not responsible for the roads in Green Acres. Because they, like, like I said, they have never been accepted by the town. Uh, and there are conditions in which we would consider taking them, but we won't take them like, like they are. Uh, anyway, uh, anything else?
I make the motion with John.
I'll take it.
I have a motion to adjourn, um, let me find something.
And he gives me that look, I know. I'm going.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, but Myrtle made a motion, John has seconded, all in favor? Alright, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate everybody coming tonight.